Good evening, welcome to the January 8th regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and a city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please be either placed in a silent mode or turned off. For items that are not public hearings, I will provide an opportunity for public comment. Kathy, would you like to do the roll call, please?
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Kempin?
Here.
Mr. Krant?
Here.
Mrs. Zanzika?
Here.
Mr. Shevki?
Here.
Mr. Schultz?
Here.
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
All right. Could I have a motion for the approval of the agenda tonight?
The agenda is prepared, sir.
Second by Mr. Stratt?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Shevki?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
All right, all of you have received copies of the minutes from our December 11th, 2012 regular meeting. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Edmonds?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes as published.
Second.
Is that Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Mr. Kempin?
Yes.
Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Shevki?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number four, public comments. Is there anyone in the public that wants to speak on an item that is not on the current agenda tonight? All right, seeing no one, we'll move into item number five, which is a conditional rezoning request. This is a public hearing for a conditional rezoning application. It's file number CR-008. Proposed Tim Hortons Cafe on the northwest corner of Square Lake and Dequinder. Section one, from NN, Neighborhood Node N, to CB, Community Business District. Mr. Tagle? Yes, sir. If I may, I would like the commission to consider excusing me from making any decisions or discussion on this item tonight. I have a client who is involved in a business dispute with a law partner, Mr. Qasab. Enjoyed any appearance of impropriety, I think it best that I not participate. All right, does anyone have any objection? May I be excused? All right, thank you. Mr. Carlisle, are you going to be giving the report?
Yes, thank you. Including your packet was a complete memo review of our findings, and I'm not going to go over that into detail, but I'm going to kind of summarize the issue for the Planning Commission as well as the audience, and then leave time for any questions. Before the Planning Commission arrives, a conditional rezoning, special use, and preliminary site plan approval for a parcel located on the northwest corner of Square Lake and Dequinder. The parcel in question is approximately .68 acres in area, and it's currently zoned Neighborhood Node N, however, and regulated as Site Type B. Site Type B in the Form Based districts does not allow drive-throughs, and thus the applicant is requesting a conditional rezoning from Neighborhood Node to Community Business in order to allow for a drive-through use. Drive-throughs in the community business are regulated as a special use. A condition of the conditional rezoning as the site plan has submitted. Before I delve into the issues that we have found in regards to site plan, I just want to give the Planning Commission a little background in regards to what the master plan talks about specifically for this area. This site was identified as a Neighborhood Node in which called for a low-intensity commercial as well as integrated residential mixed use with office and commercial type uses. Of particular importance to these Neighborhood Nodes are often the corner parcel of these nodes, and the reason for that is those kind of drive, for lack of a better term, the other development in the surrounding parcels of those nodes. If you lose the zoning of the corner parcels, often the vision of the Neighborhood Nodes cannot be implemented. So while the commercial use of this property was envisioned in the master plan, the intensity of a drive-through use was not contemplated, and that in light of the site plan issues that we're going to discuss, a drive-through use at this particular location, zoned Site Type B, was not contemplated in the master plan. Just very briefly, a approximately two-thirds acre parcel is rather a small site for a drive-through use. This small site results in numerous and potential traffic conflicts between stacking cars, cars entering and exiting the property, as well as cars circulating to find parking locations. In addition to the mere size of this parcel, it's also coupled with two different issues that raise other site plan issues. The first is that it's a proposed restaurant use. On a square foot basis, restaurant uses require much more greater parking than any other use in the zoning ordinance, so even a small restaurant use generates a significant amount of parking. Secondly to that is this is a corner location with two access points. The more access points you bring onto a site, the greater the increase for potential traffic conflicts as well. So as a result of the sheer size of the parcel coupled with the corner lot location and the proposed restaurant use, we did identify some specific site plan issues that we have found in the site plan. I'm going to quickly highlight these and then leave time again for the Planning Commission discussion. The first issue we identified was there was a deficiency of eight parking spaces. The ordinance for this size of a development required 28 spaces, and the applicant has provided 20 spaces, so they are deficient in eight parking spaces. The second issue with the site plan is that the 10th and last drive-through stacking space does butt out into the drive aisle, and this again causes additional traffic concerns in regard to that. The ordinance requires 10 stacking spaces for a restaurant drive-through, the applicant has only provided nine, that key and provides sufficient circulation. The third item that we've noticed is there's a rather, due to the drive-through, it's rather a bisected or disjointed parking lot configuration. You have approximately, I don't know, seven or so spaces located in the middle of the site, and the remaining are located on the northern end of the site, and this creates a more disjointed site plan. A ordinance requirement is that you have to have 20% site landscaping. The applicant did not provide the final calculations, but it appears that they do not have the 20% site landscaping requirement, and we just asked the applicant to confirm that in discussion tonight. We have some concerns with the access as well as circulation issues, especially during peak times in the morning and the evening, where you're going to have a significant amount of population going to this location with the current configuration. We do note during those times, there's going to be some significant circulation issues in regards to the site. Next, we have some concerns with internal pedestrian circulation. The users who park in that middle parking lot location will have to cross directly close through the drive-through circulation drive, and that creates some conflicts for us. And second off, the other pedestrian circulation along the northern end of the parking lot, they've located their menu boards as well as their speaker box in the middle of that walkway, so there's not sufficient five feet of sufficient walkway to circulate in that area as well. Next, we have concerns about the lack of snow storage area. If there's any snowfall on this site, there's not sufficient area to stack the snow to provide for adequate circulation. We have a concern in regards to the high visibility of the dumpster location specifically on Square Lake, it's going to be highly visible from Square Lake and is rather unsightly. And lastly, we had asked the applicant to provide us a traffic study. The applicant has expressed that they would rather give some feedback from the Planning Commission prior to providing that traffic study, and so we do not know what the final findings of the traffic study are going to be and how that might affect the site and the site plan as submitted. So lastly, simply because of these issues in regards to the site plan, we cannot recommend the conditional rezoning at this time. However, we do offer some consideration for the applicant to consider. The first is, in order to make the site larger, they should consider adding additional area either from the northern parcel, which we understand is for sale, as well as potentially the western parcel, I don't know the status of that. Even if the applicant were not able to add the entire northern parcel, they could at least add a portion of that to give that area, to give some more area to the site and sort of they can have adequate drive-through circulation. A second consideration is to keep the existing Tim Hortons use, however, remove the drive-through. Again, this provides for more parking areas so they can at least meet the parking requirements as well as eliminate many of the different circulation and traffic issues. A third option is to consider an alternative use of the site. Again, we support a commercial use of the site or a mixed use of the site, however, just with the site plan issues, the drive-through raises some significant concerns in our aspect. And lastly would be to, we've had discussions with engineering about removing one of the access points into the site, however, without a complete traffic study, we don't know if that will relieve all the circulation and access issues that we have raised. That concludes my report, open for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Edmonds?
Mr. Carlisle, you mentioned the alternative of acquiring some of the northern site. In your estimation, how much more, how much, what size additional square footage would be needed in order to still accommodate the drive-through?
The northern site is over, I believe it's over, it's bigger than this existing site, and again, it gets into site planning issues. I can't tell you if it's 20,000 square feet or if it's the entire size, it really becomes a site planning issue, and I'll really leave that to the applicant to determine what he needs to provide a safe and sufficient site.
Mr. Savina?
I just want to state for the record that we received, by my math, 16 emails from residents in the area. I want to assure all of you that sent emails that they were provided to the Planning Commission, there in front of them this evening.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Carlisle? Is a petitioner present?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bert Qasab. One clarification in the notes that you have states that I own the parcel. I actually don't own it, it's under a purchase agreement. Mr. Asker is the owner of the property and has owned it for some time, so just to clarify that on the record. I'm not sure if you need me to fill out the name and address on this form?
Yes.
Okay. I know there's been a big discussion about the size, you know, obviously that's one of those things that you just can't change, unfortunately. It is what it is. For reference, the Tim Horn, I developed the one on Rochester Road, some of you were here from when I did that project. We have, it's .96 acres, we have 4,100 square feet over there, we have an above-ground retention pond. Per square foot, you've got far more building in terms of land than you would have on this site. I've got almost three-quarter acre here for 2,000 feet. The parcel that was developed on Maple recently for a Tim Horn, that one is less than 5/100ths of an acre bigger. It had to have, because it had only one curb cut, it had to have setback from the road, and it's a same-sized building, and it functions just fine. It had only two more parking spaces than this site. Mark Kellenberger is here from Tim Hortons, and he may speak at some point, but they've done at least two or three other Tim Hortons for under half-acre in size. There's an exact building size as this one being developed currently in Utica for under half-acre as well. So the size configuration may be a local issue as opposed to a Tim Horn issue or practical issue for use as a Tim Horn. We tried to keep this obvious as a Neighborhood Node. One of the options was to change the site type only. Unfortunately, that option was limited in the way it could be done because it is up to the planning director, and he can only apply the ordinance, and based on that, the limitations in the ordinance did not give him that option to come before you and ask for just a change in the site type. If you look at the configuration of the building, the site, the location of the building, we tried to meet the Neighborhood Node requirements in every respect. The conditional zoning request to commercial zoning is purely to accommodate the drive-through portion of it. It's really in spirit, it's a Neighborhood Node zoning with a Site Type B type of use. We, this, actually, the city took out the requirements. When I did my Rochester Road, you had a requirement to have one-acre sites for drive-throughs, and we barely met them when we did Rochester Road. Under the new ordinance, you actually took out that requirement, knowing that it's not really based on size, just the configuration of the site. On the landscape issue, Ben mentioned, we had not provided that. When we got the comments, we went back and had the engineers look at that. The requirement is 20%, we actually have 21.1%, so we exceed that slightly. On the open space, there was some confusion about that. The building is only 6% of the site, so I think we meet that criteria. There was some confusion about a 30% requirement that we did not meet it. On the parking, and again, 20 spaces, we believe are adequate. Some of it will be employee parking. We've tried working with the property to the north, the owners to the north. Their size is not much bigger than this one. If you start to take some of that land, that one now is going to have challenges to be developed, and you'll have a new issue with the site to the north potentially. We thought by having the Tim Hortons on the corner, that site can act as a buffer for the remaining site, and for the residential to the north and to the west. As far as having the menu board within the sidewalk, it's actually positioned to be right where the employees would park, and then the remaining sidewalk would essentially be for customers. The order, the order board, the voice box, if you will, faces Square Lake directly. It's not in an angle, it's closest to the building. It should have virtually no effect, it's at 64 decibels. My technical people tell me that when we talk, sitting at a table, we're talking in 60 decibels, so it's hardly louder than talking to each other in a private conversation. Just to try and address some of these issues that were mentioned, you know, the idea of not putting a Tim Hortons, I'm sorry, not putting a drive-through, I think I've shared with you before, and again, Mark Kellenberger can confirm this, if there's no drive-through, they will not open the Tim Hortons. That's just their corporate policy, and unfortunately, it's not an option for us. In terms of having alternative uses, the property owner is here and will tell you that he's been trying to develop the site for seven years, and this has been the only viable candidate for a development. No one has stepped up. You know, no ordinance, no zoning ordinance is perfect. You try to address all the issues for every site, but that's what these options of a potential rezoning are here to try and deal with practical issues that a site may have. So I think based on the circumstances of this site, we think the drive-through is functional, we've created the patio, created the settings that you would want in a Neighborhood Node, and try to comply with every respect of a Neighborhood Node, and respectfully ask your support for the rezoning.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Edmonds?
Mr. Qasab, you mentioned that all the Tim Hortons have drive-throughs. Is that a statement true? There are no Tim Hortons across the United States that don't have drive-throughs?
At least in Michigan. I can't comment about other locations, and Mark can confirm that if you like. He's from Tim Hortons and can address that directly for you.
Apologize. Mark Kellenberger?
Excuse me, Mark, would you mind?
Nice to see you again. Yes. We have Tim Hortons without drive-throughs in non-traditional locations, Camp Uwehr, corporate offices down in downtown Detroit. The freestanding restaurants that we have, from my knowledge in Michigan, all have drive-throughs. I can't speak to New York. I know in Canada, which the business is a little bit more popular maybe than it is right now in Michigan, but I would venture to guess they probably have some. I couldn't say that nationally, but I can tell you in Michigan, a freestanding Tim Hortons restaurant would have a drive-through. The only ones that don't are non-traditional or kind of creative uses such as office buildings, hospitals, things of that sort.
Any other questions? I have one, Mr. Qasab. How critical is a second access point to this site for the viability of this property?
You know, it is critical. That's what attracted them to this site, so they can attract the business from Square Lake and from Dequinder to the site. If you limit it only to one access point, it's obviously going to even affect the traffic on the one road even more, people trying to come in through that entrance and get out, and we think it functions. Those curb cuts, as you may know, are there already. They've been there, they were installed by the city ironically, when they sold the parcel to the current owner. So we think, we'll do the traffic study afterwards, of course, and deal with any concerns that come up with that, and if some limitations are reasonable and workable, we will obviously try to accommodate that. Hopefully, they won't be so stringent that they would affect the development of the site.
I don't know this for a fact, I haven't studied this site, but if eliminating one of those curb cuts eliminated some of the issues that have been raised here tonight by the planning consultant, how does that affect your moving forward with this?
Mark, you can state your comments if you like, but...
If I can, try to address some of this, and hopefully, we've, we actually looked at things around this corner before. One of the things that predicated, even on the northern property, our operations folks wouldn't sign off on any future development in this area without the access to Square Lake. That brought us down to the corner and really started to pursue that access because we couldn't work with the adjacent properties and make the comprehensive or consolidated development. I'll tell you, it's very attractive and pretty important to our operations folks to have access to both of those, and reading through the comments and looking at the site and just trying to picture without, again, I didn't get to do a lot of technical analysis or sitting down with the engineers, we got the review letter on Friday, but in looking at it, you almost create more issues by eliminating one of the accesses. You force a double back through the site every time you have a vehicle leaving. If a vehicle leaves the drive-through window, comes out, and can come back to Square Lake Road and get out, that would be one thing. If they were trying to go west on Square Lake Road, you would force that vehicle to come back around, circulate back through the site, come back to Dequinder, and come back through. So any potential circulation issues that have been identified would actually be exacerbated by eliminating one of the curb cuts potentially.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, Mr. Qasab, you had addressed very well the issues, but I'd like to hear from the, actually, the expert if I may, and their, it's Tim Hortons. The two cars that you were talking about that were short based on our ordinance, how critical is that to your operation in your opinion, based on all the experiences you've had?
Yes, everybody looks at these a little different, and I did have an opportunity to talk through this with the senior director of US Development based out of Dublin, Ohio, and also our operations director here in Michigan, and they're not concerned over the amount of parking. Again, our business is focused a lot on the morning drive time. Again, at that point, we're predominantly drive-through use. The convenience, and as you see, and I think I've spoke to everybody before about the new branding, going to the Cafe Bake Shop, kind of incorporating a "come on in, stay a little while," soft seating, television, fireplace, Wi-Fi. I sound like a commercial. But that's geared a lot for the late morning, lunch crowd, afternoon. Again, our business is predicated in the morning. You visit our restaurants in the afternoon, the evening hours, evening hours are very light. Afternoon, we're still trying to get that lunch crowd in there, but they're not there. So the parking really isn't that much of a concern. Our peak times are focused more on the drive-through. They're not concerned at all with the 20 parking spaces we have provided.
Well, the one thing, if I may, Mr. Stratt? The one thing that, piggyback on that, you know, the one thing that I noticed is that the concept that we're after is obviously more of the patios, and more of the walkability, and more of servicing the entire neighborhood rather than, you know, from 20 miles away or whatever, five miles away. So that's what we're really trying, and that's the purpose of us having these nodes that we're talking about. We want to create individual characters in the individual areas. And to me, it seems like you've accomplished a lot, but I'm not sure I'm totally agreeable with everything that has been said, both by Mr. Qasab as well as by our consultant. But I, that's the key thing that I'm looking at, and I understand that each site has its own unique character. And so the size of the site is not the issue, it's the configuration and the restrictions that are actually applied on the site that dictates really the size or the percentage of use based on that. I know that the landscaping is somewhat limited, and I think that maybe that should be really addressed, that some additional landscaping should be really, if you are successful in getting this thing through. But those are the critical things that I was concerned about is the landscaping, as I saw it as well. But I have probably some additional comments I'd like to make later, but at this point, I think we should...
All right, anyone else from the commission? Yes, Mr. Edmonds?
The, I was actually, I've walked all three of the existing Tim Horton sites today, from one end to the other, and I've also been at this site about the third or fourth time now. And it just appears to me, now, maybe it's just because it's open space at this site, but it seems like there should be some solution on how to get this to work for everyone. The one, you don't have an escape lane at this drive-through, right? And then is that also true of the one on Maple?
And Rochester Road does not have an escape lane?
Yes.
As well. So, that's not an unusual, I'm sorry, it's not an unusual issue where you don't have... In Rochester, ironically, I had the room to move the building further north, but because of setback, I couldn't, so I ended up having a huge sidewalk on one side that sits there empty. I could have used that for an escape lane if I could shift the building, but it didn't work at the time, so, but yeah, Rochester Road, and I don't know about Maple, but they did not have an escape lane.
Mr. Shevki?
Yes, I've been out there to the site also and looked at it, and I think it's almost a perfect fit for the area. And especially, I can see with the business from the hospital to the north, and all the medical staffs and everything are going to be coming, driving by the restaurant. This would be a highly desirable area. With the party stores and the little shopping center and the 7-Eleven and different things that are around it, I think that it would be a good fit, and I can't necessarily see how it would, from just one visit, how this was, would distress the neighborhood. What kind of barrier are you going to have if this succeeds to go through between the commercial property and the residential property that abuts it?
You'll see on the proposed plan, we actually have a fence along the property line. We offered both, a fence and very dense evergreens lining of the entire property, which would create a nice barrier between the two sites. Of course, the piece to the north would then act as the buffer between the neighborhood that's north of this site and the Tim Hortons. And again, some of you were here when I did Rochester Road, it took about two years to get that one done. I'm on my third year with this site now, so, only because we've been reconfiguring it to accommodate as many of the concerns that the city may have. And to my knowledge, and I've spoken with the franchisee there, and I've spoken with some of the neighbors and got to know some of them, everybody was concerned about an adverse effect that the... effect that Rochester Road was going to have on the neighborhood. Many of them now walk over there and frequent it, and we've got a bike stand, and they'll, you know, go over there with their bikes. And it's a neighborhood coffee shop. This is not one that's going to attract the wrong crowds, not a place they're going to loiter, much like the other Tim Hortons you may have seen. It's just a neighborhood coffee shop. That's all it's going to be. And outside of the peak morning hours for drive-through, I don't think it creates really any traffic generation beyond the peak hours.
Well, I think screening, I think screening for the subdivision is very important. Not only screening, but also anything to cut the noise level down from speakers or anything like that. I think that's almost a must.
Absolutely.
You know, residents, their biggest investments are home, and we hate to see anything detract from that. Sooner or later, something's going to be built here. And as the city develops and lots have become scarce, more scarce, it's going to, we're going to have to compromise to make these productive pieces of real estate to a degree. We have to protect our neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
And I have seen where a lot of people have expressed concern about possible problems down the road, and I'm still open to hear from what they have to say. But right now, from visiting the site and trying to visualize, and with the two curb cuts, one coming off East Street, corner lots are very valuable. They're almost something that are perfect for a drive-through. So, I can see why Tim Hortons like that piece of property.
And we, I mean, we're open to any suggestions as far as helping with the screening or adding landscaping, or, again, we've moved the box to order, the voice box, as close to the building, as far away from the neighbor of the west and the neighborhood, of course. It should have virtually no sound effect that's going to travel near the neighbors, even to the house of the west, combined with the evergreen barrier that we have to the west side of the property. And then, combined with the piece to the north being still a Site Type B, where it would not potentially have the drive-through in there, it would be a good buffer to have that. But we're open to any additional ideas that the Planning Commission may deem is going to be worthwhile pursuing to make it even less effect on the neighbors. Again, using Rochester Road, to my knowledge, it's, no one has come back and complained and say, gee, this thing is causing a lot of problems. It's worked out just fine, as far as I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Carlisle, what were the comments from the Engineering Department with regards to these curb cuts and their locations to the corner? Did they have, did they make any comments about these?
They, to my knowledge, did not provide any comments in regards to the curb cuts. As Mr. Kasab did allude to, these curb cuts were actually put in by the city as part of the sale of the property. But, to my knowledge, Engineering Department did request a traffic site to look into issues such as the curb cut location and the circulation, and that hasn't been completed at this time.
Is there a left turn, center-left turn lane on Square Lake heading eastbound?
Yes.
Yes, apparently it's...
Yes.
And what about Dequinder heading southbound?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. If you'd have a seat?
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and make comment? Please step forward, state your name, sign in.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
For the record, could you announce this as a public hearing and declare that it's open?
This is a public hearing, and the public hearing is now open.
Good evening, council members. My name is Thomas Dombrowski. I live at 2900 Briarwood Court in the Briarwood subdivision. I'm a 1978 Troy High School graduate. I've been a property owner in Troy since 1989, and a member of the Briarwood subdivision since 1999. I speak today in opposition of the proposed conditional rezoning on the northwest corner of Square Lake and Dequinder. And this rezoning would change, as it's been already articulated, the north neighborhood node N, regulated currently as a Site Type B to the proposed CB community business, for the specific reason of allowing the 24-hour drive-through. When I learned about this, several questions and concerns were raised. The obvious questions that came to my mind, gentlemen, was how this would affect, this 24-hour Tim Hortons drive-through affect my neighborhood. And I concluded that it would interfere and be disruptive to our family-friendly neighborhood, that this 24-hour drive-through would cause disruptive noises, in that you'd be hearing from the noise from orders being confirmed throughout a 24-hour period over the speakers. There's been some suggestion that this, these noise levels, decibel levels, wouldn't affect the neighborhood, but I've seen or heard no study to that regard. This is an opinion. I tend to have a different opinion. I think it would. I think the sounds of cars, the engines from cars queuing up in this 24-hour drive-through would be disruptive. The pollution controlled by the exhaust and fumes and carbon monoxide directly spilling in into our neighborhood, literally hundreds of feet away, would be disruptive. The light pollution from the signs, the streetlights, the lights illuminating the parking lot, shining into our houses at night, would be disruptive. The sight and smell of garbage and litter, which is often associated, you often find in these sites, and the safety concerns, given the high volume of traffic that a 24-hour drive-through must have, near to our children's bus stop at Briarwood and Dequinder, both for the elementary students, middle school, and high school. And then the safety concerns. My children are older, a little bit older now. My youngest is 16, but it wasn't that long ago that they were playing in the cul-de-sac in front of my house. And I see many of the neighborhood's children's playing in that cul-de-sac. And these children would literally be just a few hundred feet away, a stone's throw, from exposure to strangers who are coming through this drive-through. I think about the negative financial impact that this would have on the value of our homes and our subdivision, and the desirability of our subdivision. I don't think anybody could look you in a straight face and said they want to have a Tim Hortons drive-through adjacent to their neighborhood or in their backyard. I thought about how just a mile down the road, at Square Lake and Jean R., in the northeast and southeast corners, there are office buildings and medical buildings that are not disruptive to the neighborhood, that in fact, I think, enhance the neighborhood. These are office buildings that close at 5:00, that have beautiful landscaping and soft lighting, and they enhance the neighborhood. Compare that to a 24-hour drive-through? There's no comparison, especially when you try to cram this 24-hour drive-through into less than seven tenths of an acre. I asked myself, how could this not be in conflict with the city master plan? Well, I found my answer. The answer's contained in the report prepared by Mr. Carlisle, which he's, I think this is the best indictment against this proposal, and they don't recommend it. This report, on page two, and I'm not going to read the whole report, but on page two, it reaches the conclusion. It says, "We find that a drive-through use predicated on a conditional rezoning would not advance the master plan intent of the neighborhood node at this location. Most importantly, there are numerous site planning issues created by the limited size of the property." And this report specifically talks about the impact on the residential property to the west, the Briarwood subdivision. On page four and five of the report, states, "A rezoning of the partial with a drive-through use would greatly limit the implementation of the neighborhood node N, as envisioned in the city's master plan." And perhaps, most importantly, on page 11 of the report prepared by Mr. Carlisle, "The site is only .68 acres in area. The site appears too tight for adequate circulation for a drive-through use and creates the potential for both automobile and pedestrian conflicts. Furthermore, the size limitation of the site does not allow for adequate buffering from the adjacent residential uses. The special use as design and construction is not harmonious with the character of the adjacent property of the surrounding area." The report raises safety concerns. On page 12, the safety concerns are how this increasing potential vehicular and pedestrian conflicts could negatively impact the maneuverability and safety, both on the site and in the immediate area. The report addresses the concerns of the 24 hours of operation, which, again, do not comport with the neighborhood node N concept or the city master plan. On page 13 of the report, it says, "While the proposed use is in an area where there are similar uses, from early morning to evening, the use is proposed for 24 hours. A 24-hour drive-through use may impact the adjacent western property, specifically queuing cars, and the noise of the board speaker. A 24-hour drive-through use may impact the adjacent western property from fumes of the queuing cars." The concerns that I had, the questions that I raised, were ironically raised in this report that was dated January 2nd. And finally, on page five of the report, conclusion is a drive-through use of the site would be a significant deviation from the master plan, which calls for the following, and it gives the description, which you're all aware of, of the neighborhood node N. I believe this would have a devastating effect on our subdivision. And I believe many of you who will speak after me will tell you, like me, have lived in this subdivision since the late 1990s. I don't believe anybody will tell you that a 24-hour drive-through will enhance the quality of life of our subdivision, or will have a positive effect on our subdivision. It'll reduce the value of our homes, potentially endanger our children's lives. And I want to put this in perspective. We have a Farmington Hills-based concern wants to come to Troy and wants the Troy Planning Commission to grant a rezone to allow them to build a 24-hour drive-through Tim Hortons adjacent to our Troy Briarwood subdivision, which does not comport with the city master plan of 2008. The area is too small to accommodate the drive-through. It would disrupt the neighborhood. It's not harmonious with the character of the surrounding area, raises safety concerns regarding our children and residents. And in conclusion, again, as a Troy property owner of 25 years, a resident of the city for over 30 years, a 14-year resident of the Briarwood subdivision, like many of my neighbors who will speak today, we've invested our lives, our children's lives, our finances, our fortunes, paid taxes in this city and this neighborhood. We've improved the land, improved to maintain our family-friendly neighborhood, and we've built, gentlemen, a diverse, peaceful, family neighborhood. And a 24-hour drive-through crammed in this proposed site is not in the best interest of this city. It's certainly not in the best interest of that subdivision or that area. We're not saying that this property shouldn't be developed. It should. It's for everybody's benefit. But this is not what's envisioned in the city master plan. This is not a good idea, and we appreciate your time for listening to us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
There's a gentleman.
Mr. Chairman, can we limit comments to three to five minutes, please?
Yes, and I'd also like to add, if you're going to repeat the same points that have been made, and please, if you come up, please present some new points.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Emma James Griggs. I've been a Troy resident since 1975, and a member of the, a resident and a property owner in Stone Ridge subdivision, about 2,000 feet from this facility. I think it's a great deal. I love Tim Hortons. It's a community builder. It's great for the kids. It's employment for young kids, some of their first jobs. Stone Ridge has 435 houses, and then there's a supplement right next to it, and then there's Stone Ridge 2 and 3. So, you're talking approximately 1,000 houses where they can walk to it. 24 hours a day, it's great. We had about 15 years ago, somewhere around there, a McDonald's that wanted to build a facility at 18 Mile and Dequinder. The City of Troy at that time turned them down because they wouldn't give them a drive-through at that location. McDonald's walked across the street in Sterling Heights, they built a McDonald's with a drive-through on a smaller lot, and Sterling Heights is getting all those thousands of dollars in revenue every year, and we aren't. Troy is in bad financial shape in the short run, until the economy picks up. The last city manager said before he left, and he was a longtime city manager, Mr. Surlag, he said he felt that the City of Troy would be under financial manager within four years. We had to lay off two police officers in Troy that were working the high schools, as we reduced the police staff. Something like this proposal would probably generate enough taxes to cover one of those, too. I think it's a wonderful deal. We issue a lot of these liquor licenses all over the city, and we arrest people drunk driving all the time, but where's a teenager to go? Where's a young person to go? Tim Hortons, the one I go to primarily is at 19 Mile and Shainer. During Christmas time, they had Christmas music with Bing Crosby and the rest of it. They have the Wi-Fi inside so that the couples can sit there and do their Wi-Fi thing. They have great hot chocolate, great coffee, and none of it will get you drunk. They have quick meals, you know, bagels, you can get sandwiches, you can get the donuts around the clock. If we don't approve this Tim Hortons, they'll walk across the street to Sterling Heights, where there's plenty of room, and they'll probably develop it on a smaller lot, and they'll have the revenue. We won't. This corner lot's been empty for a long time. It's time to develop it. We need it. The kids need somewhere to go. There's nothing around there. It would be perfect, the medical offices and the rest of it around there could use the income. We've got a 24-hour drive-through a mile south of there at Taco Bell's, just north of 18 Mile, and I've never, ever seen any trouble. But I do notice that the police department gets their meals there late at night. But I really think that you ought to really seriously consider it. We need the money. It's a community builder. It's great for the kids. I go out biking. It'd be great to get a cup of hot chocolate there and a donut on my bike, which I'm supposed to be losing weight on. But I think it would be a great thing, a really, really great thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Robert Cantlin. I've been a Troy resident since 1987, and like Mr. Dombrowski, I have lived on Briarwood since 1999, when the homes were first built. I agree with Mr. Dombrowski's assessment of this situation, but I would like to address it from a different point of view. With 32 years of law enforcement experience, I think I can professionally speak to the traffic patterns of what will occur if this location were developed the way it is. You'll notice in the application or in the report from Mr. Carlisle that the applicant has been reluctant to provide a traffic survey. I would like to offer you one at this point. Southbound Dequinder in the mornings, as the applicant has stated, the mornings is their peak period. Southbound Dequinder in the mornings is very busy. There is a, obviously, there's a dedicated lane for southbound Dequinder. There's a dedicated lane for left turns to go eastbound onto 19 Mile into Sterling Heights, and there's a dedicated lane for right turn only to go westbound onto Square Lake Road. The report indicates that the site is deficient by one vehicle for stacking in the, on the parcel. One vehicle stacked onto Dequinder would effectively block the right turn lane for the people who are intending to go westbound onto Square Lake Road. Now, if one car is stopped there, that driver who is not intending to go into this site has an option. He has to wait until he gets cleared, until the site is clear for him to proceed, or he has to try to work his way into southbound traffic so that he can go around. Now, potentially, there's another... Now, potentially, there's another car who has already seen this, who is also intending to go westbound on Square Lake, and he goes past where they're stacked in the right turn lane, and now you have two cars attempting to get into the right turn lane at exactly the same time, right?
Could I just interrupt you? I think the stacking that the report was referring to was at the drive-up lane. It was not stacking out onto Dequinder.
Correct. Isn't it? Correct.
Okay. But potentially, if this site is as successful as they would like, the potential for those cars to be stacked, because the speaker is at pretty much the western end of the site, correct?
Well, yes, the speaker, can you, who's got the?
We're here.
Yeah, can you point out the location of the speaker?
I believe it is right here.
That's right. From west down.
Where the hand is. See, I'm covering up the hand.
So, so that potential is reduced. However, if there is one car in those parking spaces that is attempting to get out on the north side, they're going to block anyone trying to come in, correct? And effectively do exactly the same thing, only it won't take 10 cars to do it, it might take only one or two. Additionally, anyone trying to get into the site from northbound Dequinder is going to have to get into the left turn lane, which is dedicated for, and was initially designed for the traffic to go eastbound on 19 Mile Road. So that person will have to sit there and wait for the traffic to clear, again, in busy peak period time, so that he can turn left into the site, effectively blocking the opportunity for the cars southbound intending to go eastbound. But I don't think that's even the worst of it. I think the worst of it is on Square Lake. Square Lake does not have anything dedicated for a turn, a turn lane or any deceleration lane. Effectively, anytime anyone is turning in there, they obviously are going to have to decelerate to turn, the cars behind them are going to have to slow. That lane there at the west end of that site is also dedicated for stacking for the drive-up order. There is, as I see it, there's no other place for the cars going in off of Square Lake to go. In other words, two cars are headed towards each other, the cars coming in off of Dequinder and off of Square Lake will ultimately be head-to-head, and they'll have to take turns to get into the speaker, correct?
Yes.
Now, if you look at that, there's only room for about three or four cars to stack before they get stacked into Square Lake Road. There isn't even a deceleration or a, excuse me, a right turn-only lane, effectively blocking Square Lake Road completely, and that includes not only the people who have come southbound on Dequinder to go westbound, the westbound traffic from 19 Mile to Square Lake Road, but also the traffic northbound on Dequinder to go westbound onto Square Lake. The other issue is all of the cars that are coming off of, out of the drive-through all have to go out onto Square Lake Road.
They could circle the site and go back out on Dequinder.
Well, in order for them to be able to do that, they would have to go through the drive-through lane, they get their orders at the building, correct?
Yeah. Sir, let me tell you, could you wrap up your comments? You've had five minutes, so if you could just...
Yes. My comments basically are, the traffic patterns that would be created by this are not only, they are potentially dangerous, and they are certainly obstructive for the traffic flows at peak periods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Prabakar Valuri. I've been a resident of Troy for the past 17 years, and like Tom and Bob before, I'm a homeowner in the Briarwood subdivision. I have two children. We've been there since 1999. For the record, I'd like to completely reiterate everything that Bob and Tom have mentioned in the interest of time, I won't go over the same points. But conceptually, it's been mentioned several times that the classification N is for a low-intensity neighborhood environment. To me, that is the concept of creating a harmonious situation for people who live in that area, for people who come in that area and do business. I'm fully in support of generating more business for Troy. That's a very important point that the previous gentleman had made. However, the concept of a drive-through with a tremendous amount of traffic, pollution, dust, and all of the other issues, in my mind, goes exactly against the notion of building a harmonious structure. I'd be all in support for having a place where somebody could bike up, sit down, have a bagel, have a coffee, have a conversation. But the notion of having a drive-through is exactly contrary to that, in my opinion. A couple of more specific points here is, I don't know how to explain this, but there is a right turn-only lane starting from the entrance to our subdivision. That's where school buses stop. Now, there is a portion of the right lane that is dedicated to turn into our subdivision, and then you come 50 yards further south on Dequinder, and that would be the right turn lane. As it is, this is already a problem. When I have to come home from work and turn left into the subdivision, there are cars passing by at fairly high speeds, so I have to be very careful that people, that I don't crash into them in front of our subdivision. The addition of a drive-through restaurant will certainly compound that problem by several orders of magnitude, so I'm very concerned about that. In addition to all of the other points, as a general observation, I would also say that in the vicinity, for example, of Dequinder and 18 Mile or Long Lake Road, already we've seen that the old Taco Bell building is pretty much shut down. It's, I don't know what the right term, derelict maybe, or it's unused. More recently during the Christmas time, there was the Big Boys Restaurant that's also closed down. And in the interest of, I guess, the harmony in the city as a whole and being productive in that concept, I would propose that we try to reuse some of the existing spaces that have already been configured for drive-through restaurants, rather than spend the effort and resources into building a new structure which may or may not survive. We're in a difficult economic situation at present, and losing more property like that and letting more buildings go unused, in the two examples that I gave you, in my opinion, would also be a bad move. So I'm versus- vigorously against the construction of a drive-through restaurant in that area, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matthew Zelenak. I was actually in the first house built on Briarwood back in 1998. I'll quickly sign in. I do have an objection to the Tim Hortons coming up on the corner. The one main reason, the lives of my children. We just had a catastrophe a couple of weeks ago with a gun. Same thing can happen with a car. I have the video here, if anyone would like to see it, of the bus stop, approximately 100 feet from that driveway. Yesterday morning, three cars sped by the bus. The way the city plows, snow, my kids have to wait in the street to get on the bus. Some cars right away then go into that turn lane. With the Tim Hortons open, how many more will do that? Who wants to put that liability on their back? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Parimal Thathvariker, a resident of 2861 Briarwood. I moved to this subdivision just over a year ago from Colorado, and I have a lot of anticipation from what I've gotten into. I speak here in an agreement with a lot of my neighbors, and I have an objection to this change, but also, as a noise expert, for the last 16 and a half years, I've invested my time in doing noise analysis of a lot of different industries, that includes automotive industry and energy industry. I don't know what type of study has been done, I haven't seen enough at all in this particular case. In the United States, many states and cities require that the daytime noise levels at sensitive dwellings be below 50 decibels. Those levels are dropped further to 45 or 40 decibels at nighttime. The location of the noise source, the directivity, the time for which it is operational, all these factors are taken into consideration by all other industries, including aerospace engineering, automotive, traffic conditions, traffic routes that are designed to it, and energy industry. I can assure, based on my experience in the last 16 and a half years, that I have not seen sufficient detail in this case, and I do consider that to be an engineering and technical problem in my estimate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Havish, and I live at 2875 Briarwood. I purchased my home in 1999. And many of my points are the same as the others, you know, my neighbors who have spoken, but I think, just to reiterate, I think the idea, my understanding of the idea of a neighborhood node is to allow gradual transition from the neighborhood to a more commercial usage, which I completely understand and can support, but that's for low-intensity purposes. And certainly in this case, not only is a restaurant not necessarily low-intensity, but the fact that it's a 24-hour drive-through is the big problem. I don't know about all of you, but I like, during the summertime, I like to have my windows open as frequently as I can, and noise travels at night very easily. So 64 decibels might not sound like much, but I can tell you that when my windows are open in the evening, when I'm at home up in the bedrooms, I can hear, you know, from my neighbors' backyards, people sitting out quietly, you know, a lot of us have fire pits and things like that, people sitting out quietly talking, I can hear them easily and distinctly, I can tell you what they're talking about. So noise travels at night, so it's not the same at 6 o'clock in the, you know, say 6, 7 o'clock in the morning as it is at 2 o'clock in the morning when my children and I are trying to sleep. So that, to me, would be an issue. And in addition, obviously, the specifics of this particular project don't very well comport with the parcel itself, which the planning consultant pointed out. It would appear to me that there are numerous locations in the city of Troy that would be much better suited for this type of development. It wouldn't so closely encroach neighborhoods and a peaceful enjoyment of a neighborhood. And just a couple of examples that people pointed out were the Big Boy that just closed on Long Lake and Dequinder, the Taco Bell site, the building is gone, or whatever. Those aren't right next to a bunch of houses, like within about 100 feet or so. And this lot, right at the corner, meets the corner of one of our properties, and then it's right alongside of other properties that are along Square Lake. So for that reason, and the others that have been mentioned, I would ask that the members of the planning commission deny the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Shilazan Santana. I've been a Troy resident for almost 16 years now, and I live in 2945 Briarwood Drive. I've been here since 1998 now. So I think I completely agree with all my neighbors and their points that they made. One of the things that I want to also bring to attention, last year, there was another planning session that actually talked about how the Dequinder Road itself is going to be further expanded. There was a proposal to get that to be more of a boulevard kind of a thing, and it was already trying to encroach into some of the, whatever open space we have, to the subdivision, et cetera. And that is a need, I mean, making the road further, you know, bigger in that area is a real need, and if that's going to happen, I can almost guarantee that the building of anything in that corner is going to be even more problematic. Number one, there will be more traffic, as such, we're trying to fight that. And number two, I think the noise pollution that, as somebody mentioned, is certainly going to increase, it's not going to decrease. And even during the daytime today, right across the street, there is office buildings, and they do have, you know, lights that turn on even during the night. When we keep the door open during summertime, that clearly comes right down to us, even though it's on the other side of Dequinder, we still are disturbed by it. So to me, you know, having one right closer, much more closer to our neighborhood, is going to be that much more problematic. So, you know, without repeating the points that people have already made, I would like to say that it is, I'm in complete agreement with everybody that, you know, is opposed to this, and I am supporting them as well, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak?
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Rithika Damani. I have grown up in Troy. I have gone to Troy schools. We built our house in 1999. Currently, we have a six-year-old, and we've got a nine-year-old. My biggest concern right now is my kids. I have to rush home from work, you know, get them from the bus stop. Just yesterday, I saw a huge accident right behind the bus. I mean, with more traffic that Tim Hortons is going to generate, I'm scared for my children. I really am, and I'm sure a lot of the other people will speak to that, to that effect. But that's one point. The second point, I would say, is basically the kind of kids it's going to attract in the summer. I already see a lot of teenagers there at the 7-Eleven right at the corner, they're walking our subdivisions, they don't really belong there, they're swearing, you know, it's just a lot of loitering. I don't want that loitering in our subdivision. It's a negative impact on our kids. So my biggest concern is, of course, kids, 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 and I'm sure you guys will agree, you guys have kids, so I just see a huge problem with that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I'm Anup Gangal. I'm a resident of the Briarwood subdivision. My house is right at the Briarwood Court, which would be very adjacent to the proposed Tim Hortons, and I strongly oppose having business like Tim Hortons around there. The primary reason, like Rithika said, I have amongst the youngest residents of the neighborhood. He's a one-year-old, and I'm deeply worried about his security. You know, he will grow up, want to play in the court, in the neighborhood, and would be very close to a proposed drive-through where I don't know what sort of people are going to visit. Someone mentioned that, you know, business like Tim Hortons would also be a good opportunity for young kids to have their first job and could probably bike out there. I don't know how one would ride a bicycle to this place because of the traffic conditions on Square Lake and on Dequinder, either north, south, east, or west. There's no, if you walk out of our subdivision going north, there's a sidewalk for not too long a distance. If you go south, there's a sidewalk up to Square Lake, but then this proposed property will get rid of that, too. So in a sense, getting out of the subdivision, there's no other way than a car to commute to anywhere around in the neighborhood. So I don't know how one would ride a bicycle to the... So I don't know how one would ride a bicycle to the Tim Hortons. Yeah? The proposed Wi-Fi and, you know, all the other benefits, who needs a Wi-Fi when, you know, when there's residents in the neighborhood? Why would they need a Wi-Fi in a neighborhood node designation that you have for this proposed lack? Yeah? I would rather have a business where me, my kids, my neighbors can walk and spend some time together there. Yeah? A drive-through is a big negative impact in our minds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for getting together here to discuss all those things. I am the guy who lives right at the corner. I've moved in just recently, in December.
Your name?
Norman Bolson.
Thank you.
I'm just the corner, most corner house. It will be back-to-back with that 24-hour restaurant. Typically, 24-hour restaurants are put in an area, I have seen the other Tim Hortons, and as in Taco Bell down on Dequender, most of their 24-hour businesses are put already in commercial business areas. Nobody brings a 24-hour business and stack it up in the, just in the subdivision. That area where, regardless of the space, it has to be in the area where it's already commercial business. But then guys come on, okay, they keep saying Troy is going to go under financial management. That will never happen, because Troy is not desperate for a little bit of money from Tim Hortons. Troy is one of the top cities in the United States. It was a quality of life. The revenues of Troy comes from residents. Over 61% to 62% of revenues of Troy is driven from residential customers. Those are property taxes. Commercial businesses generate half of that, less than half of that, about 30% of the revenue. The most important for Troy is the quality of life, attracting high-income customers, white-collar people. It's a white-collar city, and it's got a best school district. I myself have another house in Shelby Township, and I have a better house, better landscape, much better thing, and I'm moving in over to this place is just because of the school district and reputation of Troy, not just because of something else. The quality of the house I bought is not comparable. I have a better place there, and it's a very newer house, and I had invested in landscape. And I'm just leaving that property, coming over here, and I find out, just behind my house, they're going to be putting 24-hour business. 24-hour businesses are suitable in places like commercial businesses. All those Tim Hortons I've seen, there are two Tim Hortons downtown Detroit. Both of them have no drive-through. And then I've seen a Tim Hortons in Canada has no drive-through. And beyond Tim Hortons, there are tons of businesses out there. You can take those businesses and put there. I don't know how come we couldn't figure out to put a business there. I mean, I'm new, but it shouldn't be a problem to figure out business here. Like, any restaurants generate tons of revenues. Any restaurant, like, doesn't have a drive-through, like a Wacon Restaurant. It's, Troy's next to Birmingham. Like Birmingham, you build a little bit of restaurant, you make tons of money there. I mean, put any restaurants, anything, well, even medical office could be very suitable for medical office because there's a Bo One Hospital and doctors. Simply for Troy, a little bit of the downturn of economy, every city in the United States has gone through some budget reduction, et cetera. It was just because of the downturn overall, all across the United States. Troy's not going to face anything, and Troy's not going to be desperate. But the problem, it's going to go against a master plan, because nobody in, none of the reputable cities in the United States is going to put something like this just next to the neighborhood. 24-hour businesses suitable in an area where it's already commercialized area, malls, closer to malls, like those Rochester Road where it's commercialized business areas. This is simply not suitable. I mean, just you bring in, just get the subdivision. I have a six-year-old, and I have three-year-old children. They're small, and I came to Troy with the hopes of continuing to be a resident of Troy because of Troy's reputation, and I was sure Troy would do master plans and everything, the best plans. So now, and I was totally disappointed to hear that from my neighbors, that they're going to be putting 24-hour. Even to discuss this kind of thing should not have been a question. So I agree with all my neighbors, especially with Mr. Dombrovsky and everybody else, and I oppose to this construction of 24-hour business. And for this kind of area, for this kind of residential, close to residential area, 24-hour business is not suitable. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mohammed Akram. I just moved almost a year ago here, and I was living apartment before. I have three daughters, seven, five, and three-year-old. So I choose, I was living in apartment, I chose Troy. Even I need to pay more taxes. I'm the only person to work. I'm a physical therapist by professional. I choose Troy. I know I need to pay more taxes because of the safety. I heard that, I read that this is America's number third safest city. And my wife already had an accident in the Dequender, Ryan Road, Ryan and Maples. Dequender is already, every time we are, something is going on, Dequender, some kind of accident is here. And for my children's safety, even this morning, there is ice still in the, where the buses stop, and she just slept in this morning because nobody cleaned the ice. The snow is still there. So if they make a drive-through, I moved from Canada, so I love Tim Hortons, I like Tim Hortons all the time, but not the drive-through. It will be very hard for even us to enter, my house is first house when we entered, and many people already come to my house, use my driveway, and for U-turn, and then they go back to the, if they miss the, they go back. If they, imagine if they make the Tim Hortons and it's blocked, so I'm concerned with safety of my kids. So I'm planning to live here for a long time. So it's just, I feel very, you know, concerned and for safety for my daughters. So, but, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now we're going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion. Gentlemen?
Okay, I'll go first. Overall, the design itself, I have to commend the designer of the site because he was able to fit eight pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack. The things that bother me about that site, the way it's designed, is first of all, the people in the southern parking area have to cross the drive-through lane to get to the restaurant. And that's precarious at best, I know, especially like when I was escorting my mother, who had a walker, to do that. It would be very difficult to cross in front of the lane because people in the drive-through, and I've done it, and I've seen it happen at other places, they're focused on their food, and as soon as they get their food, they turn around and hit the gas, and whoops, there's somebody in their way. So that bothers me of this, that site design. Couple other things, I know you, the designers and the developers worked hard to make it a neighborhood node layout with the aspects of neighborhood node, but technically they want to rezone, and I'm really against spot zoning. This commission and the, our consultant and the planning department itself have worked very hard to develop a master plan for the city that will be viable for decades to come. And spot zoning disrupts that plan, and I don't agree that we start spot zoning. Couple other issues, is the traffic. I'm looking at the layout of the left-hand turn lanes. You really can't, if you're going eastbound on Square Lake Road and want to turn into the Tim Hortons, you really have, there's maybe one car can wiggle into that left-hand turn lane, maybe. Otherwise, you're going to be blocking traffic. And if there's more than one waiting to get in for traffic to clear, I see a congestion area building. The same thing occurs on people going northbound on Dequender. There's really no legal way to turn left into Tim Hortons, but people will probably try to do it. There's one lane that goes straight north, there's a right-hand turn lane, and there's no left-hand turn into Tim Hortons. So I can see that as a possible backup on northbound Dequender. I think the, our biggest responsibility here as a planning commission is to promote health, safety, and the welfare of the public. And I find too many deficiencies that were pointed out by our planning consultant, and at this time, I'm not satisfied that this would be, as designed, a good idea to have a drive-through. They gave, the planning department and our consultant gave many examples of how the site could be used commercially, and I think all of those are valid. And if any one of those three that they pointed out are implemented, I think it'd be a fine use of the site.
Thank you. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Stratt.
Yeah, I have a question for the petitioner, if I may.
All right.
Come forward.
Come forward.
I've got a question in regards to the time of operation. Would you consider it not being a 24-hour operation for the drive-through?
That could be explored, Mr. Stratt. Operations from Tim Hortons would have to get involved in that issue. They've had some locations where they do close down sort of few hours in the middle of the night, which really has no business or traffic anyway. They do start up pretty early, though, to gear up for the morning traffic, as you could imagine, so I'm not sure it would have a material effect on, or impact, rather, by limiting those few hours at night potentially, although that can be explored.
We've investigated it. Operationally, they do want to pursue the 24 hours with the hospital and the different shifts. Again, we've looked at trying to limit those hours in certain situations, mostly where they're regulated under ordinance. That's the biggest factor. We did do one recently where the drive-through remains open and the dining room closes for a short period in the evening, but for, other than that, most of them are 24-hour operations. We would look to remain at, at least for the majority of the business, 24-hours drive-through, possibly considering some type of compromise on that.
If... Go ahead. No.
Okay. If, this is a conditional rezoning, so all conditions could be applied, and I'm assuming it could be applied also to the hours of operation. I guess I could...
That is a potential condition that could be offered by the applicant.
Pardon me?
That is a potential condition that could be offered by the applicant.
Yeah, as part of that. I just want to echo a few of my position on this, or if I may, my comments as it relates to the site. The curb cuts that we are talking about in terms of the traffic conditions, we have a lot of gas stations right on Rochester Road that are really close in terms of access, curb cuts, et cetera. We can find all kinds of conditions if we want to search long enough and hard enough, even, and I know this is not really a Starbucks, but Starbucks is really on a corner, Big Beaver also has two exits and entrances, and of course, we have all kinds of traffic there, as everyone knows, not anywhere as near what I would expect it to be on what we're talking about here. But from a safety standpoint, I think that we have to really look at that. That is not really a real big issue as far as I'm concerned, because we have all kinds of conditions out there. As far as the safety factor of the pedestrian walkway, I looked at the plan, and I thought that it looked rather clean in terms of the walkability from the actual parking, and there's a concrete walkway leading right to the restaurant. I don't see any conflict in terms of internally of the walkway, of the pedestrian walkway. I don't see it at all. I really think that the one negative thing I don't like is the dumpster location. I'm not too thrilled with the size of the dumpster and that condition, but that may be a problem that you have to compromise. The additional land that everybody keeps talking about, I really don't like putting a gun to a developer's head and saying, "You have to expand and you have to do that." We have sites that are problem sites. These are sites that we have all over the city, and we have to work, and we have to bend, and we have to try to compromise. To me, that's an important situation. The patio, I really like. I really like the idea of extending the patio, and if anything, I'd like to see it enlarged and have bicycle racks, have that, try to create that real image that you really are trying to create.